I'd like to call the board meeting of the Bryan City Board of Education to order. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome on this sunny day. It's good to see that sun. Rob, will you please call the roll?
Emily Ebaugh.
Here.
Cindera Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Ryan Miller.
Here.
Glenn Newcomer. Thank you.
He said he might be late. So you have in your packet the board minutes from the April 17th meeting. There are no additions or corrections. All entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Tom?
Second.
Ryan, please call the roll.
Cindera.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now's the time in our meeting. We have public participation. I know there are a lot of guests tonight. I don't know who wants to start.
We have our presentation with Nathan Neese and Grant Redhead, and they would like to speak to the board regarding dual sports policy.
And Mr. Neese is the soccer coach, the head boy soccer coach, and Mr. Redhead, the head boy's football coach.
Correct. So gentlemen, the best spot is right up here. That way the cameras get a good view. And you can just speak to the board.
Okay. First, I want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to present. Mr. Redhead, Coach Redhead and I, we've been kind of talking about dual sports now for a little while and kind of put our heads together and come up, I thought, a pretty good plan here that we wanted to present to you. So I'd like to go ahead and give you two of your copy of our application and policy that we've drawn up here. And if Glenn's coming, you'll probably give me a copy there.
Please give any minute.
He's walking in right.
So I should stall then.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'm going to ask for questions at the end, but if you guys feel the urge to ask a question throughout the presentation, feel free to interrupt.
I might. Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. So again, thank you for the opportunity and time to present, to make a very important decision and important issue for the school and community. The Bryan Athletic Department is asking for your approval of the dual sports policy beginning in the fall season of 2017. It is certain fact that the Bryan community is blessed with students that strive for the best in themselves and the school. Students will stop at nothing to challenge themselves to their maximum. In almost all cases, the board and administration of Bryan City Schools provides the opportunity for every student to pursue their interests, talents, and skills in a way that challenges them to develop into the best person and the best version of themself. The board has approved and provides AP English, honors English, AP American History, AP Chemistry, honors Sciences, honors Spanish, college credit plus, the list goes on and on, and continues to grow with the demand of students who want to challenge themselves more and more every day and every year. Who are any of us to draw the line and tell the students to stop? Students at this very moment are participating in multiple music programs in the same day, band and choir, choir and orchestra, even band and orchestra, not to mention we have also now added Electrifying Your Strings, a growing popularity within the orchestra program. And I'm going to make a little plug here because I'm actually helping out with the Electrifying Your Strings program, playing some music with them, and there's a concert on May 25th, Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. So anybody, come on out and listen. We're putting together a pretty good show.
Thanks.
Yep. Our music teachers are making it happen, and their programs are only flourishing because of it. Working together, we currently provide students with these opportunities in the classrooms to pursue their dreams, all while making Bryan City Schools and the community better as a whole. The athletic fields and courts are an extension of the classroom. We hear this from referees and officials before every game that we play. I can speak for our coaches and say that we truly believe that the field or court is a classroom, and we treat it as such in our coaching. When thinking about coaching methods, rules, and policies like this that we're talking about tonight, and in any form, it is important to not forget that athletics are a learning vehicle. A very simple analogy that comes to mind is a garden. A garden can be made up of many varieties of flowers and plants that require different amounts of sunlight, water, and food depending on the plant variety and its individual needs. In order for the garden as a whole to be plentiful and flourish, each individual plant needs to be tended to in its specific manner. It needs to be allowed to have the best opportunity to thrive. You would not have a bountiful garden if you simply provided a blanket, single amount of water, food, and sunlight for all of the varieties. Furthermore, you would not stop and simply not provide a certain plant or flower its necessities if it is required for more to flourish. If even one plant does not flourish, the garden as a whole does not reach its potential and therefore does not flourish. Although we are talking about individuals here with this policy who would participate in dual sports, we are really talking about a global influence and a philosophy that promotes the success and flourishing progress of Bryan Athletics and the Bryan community as a whole. A Bryan parent recently shared with me the conversation that they overheard from Archibald parents as they were walking into a track meet last year. Archibald is a school that provides their students the opportunity to participate in dual sports. In fact, there is a good portion of our policy in front of you that we'll talk a little bit about later that we took directly from Archibald's policy. The conversation with those parents was something like this. Well, it's a good thing our softball game was canceled today because now we are guaranteed an extra 20 points today from our throwers. And so I'm not sure how you guys feel about this in the room, but for me, it really bothers me when I hear this. We are really going to let our competition and rivals continue to gain an advantage on us. It kind of bothers me. I wonder how we're not leveling the playing field and providing that opportunity for our teams to be more successful against our competition. Archibald is only one example of the many schools across the local area, state, and nation, schools that we must compete with, that provide students the opportunity to participate in dual sports.
I did a lot of research on this, and I found multiple schools from multiple states. Schools as small as Montpelier to the north and as large as Mami to the east. Okay, all of them have some sort of dual sports participation. What we've done in this is try to organize it as best we can to give our kids the best opportunities. There are kids that could be all-state in two sports, but because of the seasons, the way they fall, they can't participate in both. Okay, we had soccer in the fall down south, or in the winter, excuse me. Well, we can't play in the snow up here. But there's kids that were on my football team that once soccer started, they didn't have goalie. If they did not get my defensive end to come out and play goalie, I said absolutely, I don't want to hurt those kids' performance, or mine. It's Tuesday night. You know, I'll get him out of practice early. He'll be fine. He can go stand in goal and help the team win. So we've done that. I've done it in different states, and we've researched a lot. I've even talked to other athletic directors at Clyde. Clyde's got a great athletics program. Their best soccer player was also their kicker on their football team. That's just one example. There's other examples that we have found. There's a lot that'll work. Some may not just because of the time. Okay, but I think that it'd be important for us, like Coach Neese has cited, to give our kids the opportunity and give them the option, if they're going to be that supreme athlete, that exemplary athlete, to help our teams win. So hopefully everybody, when they see the color purple coming, they know it's not a good thing for them. They're looking at a loss.
So it's certain that this policy will provide opportunity for our athletes and programs to win more games. But it also increases participation and develop our teams into successful programs. Participation in sports has been a growing concern in the community of Bryan, and I don't think it's a secret. For the amount of students that we have enrolled in our school district, some would argue that we are teetering on embarrassing in regards how many students we actually have participating in athletics. Although I'm not suggesting that a dual sports policy would fix this issue solely, it would however be an excellent step in a direction that creates a culture within the community to promote athletic participation. I believe the best way that we can increase participation in athletics across the board is to create a culture that promotes participation and not limit participation. Creating a culture is a long-term vision. It happens one day in one policy at a time. It should be the goal of everyone in this room to see that vision and strive to provide opportunity and a culture for participation in athletics. So I've been throwing out terms like everyone, all, we, global, community, school, athletics, team. In order for this policy to have success, we recognize everybody here, Mr. Ruffer, Mr. Redhead, myself, all the coaches in Bryan Athletics, we recognize that there needs to be support and buy-in from everyone. And after sitting down, we feel that we've compiled data from around the area, from other coaches, from area schools, and we feel we put together a policy that all of us can get behind and support. It is a policy that we believe that will make Bryan Athletics as a whole better. So with that being said, I'd like to take a moment to go over the policy here a little bit more in detail. When you look at the dual sports application in front of you, the first paragraph speaks on the philosophy that this policy was built on. It's important to have a good philosophy foundation. And so I've shared with you just now and a few more words than what's described there in the policy of what that is. Next, we see general information on proceeding to complete the application upon which a dual sports advisory team comes together to approve the participation prior to the OHSAA designated first practice of the season. Now, the dual sports advisory team is made up of two coaches, the student athlete, a parent or two parents, and the athletic director. Please note that approval must be unanimous by all parties on the dual sports advisory team. We understand that not all circumstances of dual sport participation may work out. So in keeping true to the understanding of the philosophy that we use to build this policy, it will take everyone's buy-in, and this part of the policy makes it so that it must happen. We can't have even one person not approve of the student moving forward with athletics and dual sports. Next, you see that we are proposing a two-year trial period to test the policy and collect some data. We would like to present to you after the 2018-19 school year of our findings, shortcomings, and successes alike. At that point, we want to reevaluate the policy and determine then if it is worth continuing or discontinuing. Next, you will see a breakdown of the requirements for dual sports participation. First, student must declare a primary and secondary sport. This is kind of the first step in declaring dual sports. A primary sport is defined as the sport which takes precedence over another sport in the event there is a conflict of schedule or any other matter that could lead to conflict. The student must adhere to the primary sport in the event of any and all conflicts of schedule. The only exception is if a primary sport, non-league, or non-tournament contest conflicts with a secondary sport, league contest, in sports where league contests are counted towards titles, or a OHSAA tournament contest. And staying true to the betterment of Bryan Athletics as a whole, this emphasizes the importance of league and OHSAA tournament matches and performing as a whole better in the NWAAL league and OHSAA tournament for the respective sports. So again, the secondary sport, if you have a league contest that day, no matter what your primary sport is, you have to go to the league contest because again, we want.
We want Bryan to advance.
Sure.
Exactly. Same with tournaments, like postseason tournaments. As you continue to read, contests will always take precedence over practices, and student athletes must practice in both sports. Practice schedules will be clarified and determined in the initial meeting with the dual sports advisory team. All work must, all must work together to create a schedule and plan that will foster growth and success for the student athlete.
Now, we won't have two-hour practice. Let's take our sports. They're not going to go to two hours of soccer practice and then come to two hours of football practice. That's not it. What we would do is, let's say I have a kicker in a realistic situation. He would come, I would structure my practice, special teams first. He could come, kick, do our special teams. Then I would release him to go over to the soccer field to practice with Coach Neese. He'd have the same amount of practice if it was one or the other, but he could specialize in both areas. And our practices offset a little bit anyways. Some do, some don't, but that's why we're professionals. We can work that out.
So moving on to requirement two, you will see that if a student is disqualified or suspended in one sport, it will also mean that they cannot participate in the other sport. Pretty self-explanatory. Approval can be denied at any time by anyone on the dual sport advisory team for any reason. The interest of the student athlete is always the top priority, and that's what Coach Redhead has said from the beginning, and that's what this policy's been built on. The student athlete is number one. If there are academic concerns at any time, or the rigors of dual sports participation have proven to be too difficult for that particular student athlete, they are allowed to discontinue their secondary sport and only participate in their primary sport without any penalty. The last two requirements bring home the necessity for all to work together to allow for the success of the student athlete. As long as we all are working together towards a common goal so they can reach their potential and thrive, there are one more flower, a plentiful garden that is Bryan Athletics. We can proceed, produce yields of wins, league titles, and all of the above in the community. Finally, looking at the part of the application that is asking for information, you are already aware of the purpose for declaring a primary and secondary sport. We would also like to know the role that the player sees him or herself feeling on the respective teams. This will give the advisory team good information on moving forward in the approval process. Also, we would like to know of other extracurricular activities in school and out of school. So again, it's going to paint a clear picture of the student athlete as a whole. What are they involved in? And if they're involved in everything in the kitchen sink, you know, that's something that we're going to be able to sit back and see and, and you know, make a judgment call as an advisory team committee. Again, more information that the advisory team can use to help aid in making approval that will allow for the most success for the student athlete. So in closing, please understand that this dual sport policy is not built on any one personal or single or two-sport agenda. This policy is meant to genuinely provide the community of Bryan the most success in the classroom and on the athletic fields and courts. All we can do is provide the students with opportunity. You can never underestimate a student, and especially a student athlete. It is our duty to provide every student every opportunity that we can to allow them to pursue their talents, their skills, their interests, and their dreams. We ask you please approve the dual sports participation policy so that Bryan City Schools may reach new heights. Thank you for your time and consideration. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have at this time.
I do have some questions. Thank you very much for taking the time and the research that you've put into it. And I want to first say that, ah, Emily Ebaugh, I don't speak for the board at this point. I think it's the role of a varsity coach to coach a team to winning, to winning league titles, to winning tournament games. So that being said, a lot of what you talked about is to appeal to the more skilled athletes on your teams, those who have skills that might transfer from one sport to another. I'm a little concerned about, for example, football requires 11 players on the team. Not all 11 of those are the most skilled athletes. So would you discourage some of the, say, an average athlete who is like the bread and butter of your team, who you're going to need, would you discourage some of those athletes if they know that, you know, the dual sport athlete might come in and take their position?
No, I would actually say you've got a great opportunity to that athlete because I say they're going to be here for two hours a day. There's a person that's coming over to help us and to help you develop, so you're not throwing them in a position that you're not ready for. I think that it serves certain purposes. You know, we've talked about several scenarios. We've tried to throw everything at each other that, okay, what if this kid wanted to play? The only way that we would discourage any kid from this scenario would be academically. Listen, you're in five out-of-school clubs. You're in youth group. You're, you're so busy. I don't know if you can manage all this. Life is time management, but the kids that are there, even if they're just going back and forth between us two, for example, we're not going to discourage them. They've got two hours at a practice to where the dual sport kid comes in for 20, 30 minutes, fills a specialized role, and then would go. There are other sports that work a little easier than ours. Some do, some don't. But I think with us, you know, who would have figured football and soccer so close? But we started talking about it, and we said, yeah, we believe in that. We want to win. You know, we want our whole school to win. You know, we've already seen a good change in culture in the room across because we've got all sports lifting together. Now, we want to get those sports cheering for each other, playing for each other. I know that my boys, if we have a soccer player that comes to us, they're going to go support soccer team when we get out of practice and vice versa. And I think it'll help build community. So I think all the kids will prosper. It's our job to make sure we talk to the kids, and we make sure they don't get down and keep bringing them and developing them because.
Yeah, because I don't want to discourage kids who may not be eligible or interested in dual sports, but may feel like, are they being displaced by someone who's, we all know there's kids who are just better athletes. There are. And who have ability to do that. But there's some kids that we need them to fill a role, and I don't want them to be discouraged.
That's what we would do. We would say, listen, you're filling a role. Whether you're out there for 40 minutes or you're out there for five, you're helping this team win. Whether you're playing on the scout team or playing on the first team, you're doing something to help the team win, and you're all a part of it. And that's our job as coaches. And I think we can do that. We've got a good coaching staff here at Bryan, and I think that, you know, they truly care about the kids, and that's why we want to give them as many opportunities as we can.
Some questions?
What sports do you see as primary candidates for the dual sport type?
I think it would work best in the fall and in the spring. The winter schedules, they play so many multiple games. There's some sports that with all their games, the kids may just go from one contest to another contest to another contest. Then it would be in us to say, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to rest you because your body's overdoing it. You know, we have to do that. It can work with soccer and football, soccer and cross-country. It could work possibly, depending on the schedules, and that's why both coaches and the athletic director would sit down, we would sit there and see how many conflicts there are before we even approve it and say, okay, we could do this, and we can work out a practice schedule to get you ready to compete. In the spring, it could work with track and baseball and softball, depending on the games. After, if they don't have practice and they have a Saturday meeting, there's no games on Saturday. You know, I've got a couple, a kid that plays on my football team that's a great baseball player that won the 400 is an eighth grader last year. You know, he could do that because he's a well-conditioned athlete and he's in good shape. But it's, winter is the tough one, and it doesn't fit exactly for all, but it fits for most. And it gives a lot of our athletes an opportunity that they wouldn't normally have.
And according to this policy, you're saying any one of the committee made up of coaches, parents, and athletic director, anybody decides, know that it's a done deal. It stops.
Yeah, and it's because, and they'll have a reason. If they say, if Mr. Ruffer says, listen, I think this is a great kid, but I think he's going to struggle academically, and we don't want to see that because what are we here to do? We're here to educate, not just put out, you know, athletes. Then we explain why, and in that meeting, we say, listen, at this time, no. Maybe in the future, if our grades are stronger and our academic performance is stronger, then we could revisit. If Coach Neese says, listen, I don't think, you know, his legs are going to be able to handle it. Okay. If he's just, if he's his midfielder and my linebacker, that may not work, that combination. That's for us to look at, see what the physical constraints and, you know, what the kid's body's going to go through.
Well, and you just touched on one of the big concerns. I mean, it's the issue of, you know, stress on the body and recovery time and everything else that comes along. You know, you're running nonstop, and I realize that you get into, you know, terrific condition with a lot of running, but then you get into the hitting and everything else. There is a recovery time that's necessary here.
And there may be a time that we said.
And one of the things I guess I feel I have witnessed with a lot of kids, and that is, you know, they're pushed so hard on some of these sports, especially say in some of the younger baseball players, you know, and they literally get burnt out. They get arm problems and everything else. I mean, truly, you can push too hard.
And that's one thing that us as coaches would, as we sit down at the beginning of the season, before we even start, we would say, okay, as we get into the stretch, there's going to be times that I just need them to kind of watch practice with me. I need them to mentally be there to understand what's going on.
Play.
And, and you know, because the dual sport athlete may just be a role player as well. But they like playing, and they want to be a part of it. And then we can sit there, if we talk and say, yeah, his leg's pretty burnt. He's having some trouble, you know, keeping up. He's losing a step. Why don't we sit him for a couple days? And they come, they come to both our practices, pay attention, recover, and then that way they'd be able to compete. So we will take and keep close tabs on it. You know, we want to do what's best for the kids and not just run them into the ground. They're not a thoroughbred or a racehorse.
I have one point, actually, one point of clarification that I want to make on item two on your requirements here. It says if the student athlete is disqualified or suspended from one sport, they are not allowed to participate in the other. What's, what's your intent in definition of that, i.e. a student gets suspended for, unfortunately, we have students who get suspended for violations of drug and alcohol policy. Is that automatically disqualify them from dual sports participation, or is that something that is going to be handled case by case? Is that something, I guess?
It's true that the same, like, if he's out, if he's playing either of us primary, that's two weeks. If they go to the class and do everything they're supposed to, for both of us. If mine gets the personal fouls and gets ejected from a game, and they get two games, two weeks worth is what it is for me. It's two weeks for him, just like red cards. Usually two games is a red card. Well, that may be a week, and it'd be, he'd miss that Friday's game as well. We don't want to like say, oh, well, you just got suspended in that, but it's okay to participate over here. We're still trying to teach them, right?
I appreciate that.
And teach them, okay, you have accountability no matter what.
And then if I could, Mr. Ruffer, you're the athletics director. Let me ask, what's your thoughts on this? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm going to.
That's right. I've always said I reside where I can do. We had coaches council meeting in February, and we talked about a lot of different things, but this is one of them that kind of got spearheaded by these two. And I sent out an email and just said, I want you just to reply to me and let me know where you stand, your thoughts and stuff like that. And I was very, I was actually very surprised. I think we had maybe one that was a little skeptical. A lot of them were on board with it, which made me more on board with it. I think as far as you go with the coaches, I think they're on board with it. I'm not going to lie. I have, I have questions too. Presenting my questions to them, I feel they've got a good idea of what it is. I know in the two years of doing my job, not any policy is bulletproof, but I think they've got a pretty good plan laid out that we can go with to at least try it out and see if this is productive or see if it's not. I guess I was a lot more skeptical at the beginning when this got brought up, or even back when I was coaching it got brought up. I feel a lot more comfortable now. I think there will be conflicts. There will be trials and tribulations, and that's part of our job to sort things out and see what's best for the kids.
Glenn, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was thinking on the academic side a little bit. Could you, could someone address the issue in regards to what our current grade point requirement is and how you are informed of the academic performance of your students and how you will monitor this with dual sports?
He's the ace in the hole. He's the guy that gets it all. But we do monitor the grades. Anytime I call down to Mrs. Kusmal, she can pull up grades. We pull up grades on any of the young men while they're going. 1.85 is what we have. Initially, we've gone both ways. You know, 1.85 is what everybody needs to be eligible. It's higher than the state average. You know, initially, we were thinking, well, do we want to make sure we give it a 3.0 to have kids? We can go either way with that with the academic requirement. We don't want to single out the kid that can handle his workload, but maybe isn't an AB student, but gets Bs and Cs and is solid and gets everything done. You know, I was the BC student sometimes. But the thing is, we want to make sure that their grades don't suffer as well. If they're participating with both of us and we see grades tank, we pull out of the secondary sport until grades come up. We've used the athletics just like we do guys. You need grades. You know, you need them to be eligible. You need them to graduate.
Would it be possible to have some type of benchmark that if grades would start to fall under this amount, they would then be required?
Absolutely. We can add that at your directions.
Direction, an exact amount in policy, but I think the general idea that you're talking about is good.
If we see them go below what, you know, if they're getting all bad grades, no, you know, we don't want that. We want them, I mean, they're here for an education. Athletics teaches as much as the classroom does, but we want to make sure they don't, you know, they're not at practice all the time, too tired to go home and do homework.
I appreciate the fact that you said they're not going to have two complete practices in each sport every night.
Right. And that's where we come in and where we work together, and I think that it'll build even more unity in our athletic staff.
Sure.
And our athletic programs with, with one another.
Realistically, how many students would you anticipate this would really impact?
Next year, I think it would be a few less than after the kids actually find out. I would say anywhere from half dozen to a dozen, six to 12. Those six to 12 would be very special. They could be kids that could be all-state athletes and possibly both, and may not even be in my sport, in football. But they're kids that could be, you know, soccer players, cross-country runners, baseball and track. You know, we could have, we've got some big Husky baseball players out there. If there's not baseball, they could come out and they may be able to sling the disc as 180 feet. We give them an opportunity to do that. But we, it's not going to be a widespread 50 or 60 kids. Initially, I think it'll start slow, and then as we see the success of it, and as we see some of the things that work well, we can tailor and, you know, I think it'll get better and better as it goes.
I'll just throw in two cents too, as we're both boys coaches up here, but I honestly, where I really see the impact down the road is girl sports. I really see that as probably being like the best impacted where you're going to get a lot of those dual sport girl athletes, you know, playing two sports and doing great things for both sports. You know, playing two sports and doing great things for both sports.
Sandra, do you have any comment or question?
Could I speak? Is there any way to do that still?
Sure, jump in. First, tell me who you are.
I'm Kiri Zimmerman. My daughter Audrey is currently a freshman, but she's someone who would probably be interested in this. Just a couple of things after I heard that made me wanna say a couple of things. Number one, as far as you brought up injuries, um, all of my kids have played dual sports up until they got to the high school level. I mean, they've been involved in travel soccer while, like, right now, my daughter's doing travel soccer on a boys team. And she's also doing junior high track. And, you know, up until a couple of years ago, they also did three nights a week of dance. And that's what they love to do. And, and if I can provide that for them and, and they're happy and they're still all straight A students, great. Last, or this spring, my daughter did cross-country. It was the first year she didn't do anything else. And it was the only time she's ever had an injury. And I almost think it was because it was the repetitive use of just running and she didn't have the soccer or the dance or anything else to strengthen her. And so all winter, she's been working on strengthening herself to keep her healthy for track and she hasn't had any of that. But she's been doing a lot of stuff on her own outside of track to keep her healthy. So, you know, I think obviously, yes, I mean, she could get hurt on, on a soccer field immediately or whatever. But I don't think necessarily that it's a bad thing to maybe do other sports. I think if you do research, you'll look at any orthopedic surgeon who would recommend that they do other sports and not the same repetitive use type thing. The other thing is when Mr. Neese mentioned numbers, um, she's on that cross-country team. They barely had enough for a team. We actually had to have some foreign exchanges. If we wouldn't have had them, I don't even know if we would have had seven people for a team. She's the only freshman that went out. There were no seniors on the team this year. I mean, I worry that number, there's maybe one or two eighth graders that I think might do it. And so if we don't, you know, I, I can guarantee you that there might be some soccer players who would come out and, you know, maybe they're not the most, you know, competitive or talented runners. But heck, if that's not gonna help them when they're on the soccer field to have some running. And as far as, um, looking at the, the schedules for this year, I think there were only two games that she absolutely couldn't do like soccer if she picked cross-country as her primary. There were two or three games where they both played at home. Cross-country takes twenty minutes. She could maybe make it for the second half if coach wanted her for that. Other than that, there were no conflicts on the schedule. So, you know, personally looking at it, if there were a ton of conflicts, I don't know if we'd try it. But looking at that, I'm like, that's definitely doable, at least in her scenario.
Thanks for that perspective.
My only comment was going to be that I appreciate the fact that you're looking at, um, reevaluating this after a two-year period. Which gives you an opportunity to track. All the pros and cons of the, the students and that thing.
Yeah, to go along with that, I'd say why, why two and not one year?
Just the novelty of it, you know, like one year is probably not enough data. You might just get like a, might get kids excited and they're coming out and you're not getting real data. You know, two years, I think you, you'll level things out and you'll really see who's gonna stick it out and what, you know, who's really gonna participate in dual sports by the second year.
Okay, I didn't mean to cut you off, yeah.
No, no.
We've heard lots of positives and I know Mr. Ruffer alluded to the fact there might be some concerns. Are there some that you'd wanna share with us right now about what your concerns might be? Or you're just trying to consider that in the way you're gonna manage this.
Well, I think if we do our, what you pay us to do. And, and, and think about the kids first, there won't be any big concerns. And in those meetings, you know, it'll be the three of us, the parents and, and the young lady or young man, the young man in our case. But we'll sit down and say, okay, this is what you have to benefit. This could be a potential. We don't wanna see grades go down. We don't wanna see overuse. We're gonna have to work at this and we would, we have to define those roles. Sometimes our, our youth today thinks they're ten foot tall and bulletproof and they can do everything. Which when you tell them, well, we're not gonna just jump in headfirst, we're going to ease into this and make sure you can handle it. And as it goes, and as you excel, then we can keep at it. You know, I think that would be about the only concern. They just wanna go, go, go. And we would be there guiding them. They may be somewhat impatient, but.
And, and I, I've heard the injury concern or like the overdoing it, you know, sort of to the point of injury. You know, that's kind of one of the bigger things that I've heard. And my personal opinion of it is that I've never been one, in my playing career, coaching career, until the day I'm done, I will never make a decision on the field because I'm thinking of an injury. Like, that is never in my equation when I'm thinking, you know, it's just one of those things where injuries happen. And there's really nothing you can do about it at the time. But I think it's more important for me and, and the way that my thoughts are on this, i- is that we provide the kids the opportunity. You know, that's, that's the biggest thing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Dress something you would ask about grades, what we try to do in athletic form, what we try, and we're trying to get better at this, getting more regular. We try to send out grades to the coaches every two weeks to give them an idea. We send out, we don't send out every kid, we send out. Just so they have an idea, so they can stay on top of that as well.
And so just for clarification, if a student becomes ineligible, how do they become eligible once again?
They've got, if you're talking to one eight five, they would have to go the whole next nine weeks and be above a one eight five. And then also meet the five credits through O H S A to become eligible.
We don't go week to week in our grade point average. We go nine week to nine week. So if they can.
Even though we monitor it on a bi-weekly basis?
Yeah, I, that's something we try to implement. I'm, I'm not saying we're perfect, and we try to get them grades out. We wanna get them grades so that they're aware.
Is there a way on this form, if you were to put on there, cause you're gonna have this advisory council of the parents, the coaches, you, Mr. Ruffer and that, is there a way to put on this form, hey, listen, this is the agreed upon grades that you will maintain to continue participation?
Again, I think we, I, I, I'll just interrupt here. We do our grade point average on a quarter by quarter basis. And from what I've seen with our athletic director and our coaches, they do monitor that. They do encourage study tables. They encourage, they'll pull kids out of practice to have them work on homework versus being in the practice that day. I think we need to leave that up to our coaches to do on a case by case basis. I worry that if we get into trying to set that mid-quarter policy, that we interfere with some of our O H S A eligibility.
And the other one, the small example, I know there's a couple of teachers that they will enter all their grades that they're gonna have for the nine weeks.
So they have zero for a long time.
Cause that used to freak me out every time I flipped up and they've got an F in this certain class. I'm like, why do they have a, a four percent in that class? It's because they entered all what they're gonna have as assignments. So you started at zero and by the end, you just work your way up and you go. So that, that kinda throws a wrench into that a little bit. Not saying it's right or wrong or whatever, but that's something that we've already seen. Some teachers might have a test and you might not get the grade until a week and a half later or some, you know, there's, there's other scenarios that, that can happen that, that makes that what you're suggesting tough. It doesn't mean it's impossible, but it does make it some challenges.
And, and I'm working with two students right now that are on the soccer team. I mean, they just quite frankly bombed the first test in the fourth quarter. I mean, they're just working themselves to death right now. Maybe me too even, you know, to get those grades up.
Because their quarter now is gonna play how, into how they do in the fall.
Absolutely, absolutely. So there are kids that are, you know, eligibility for the fall is riding on this current quarter.
Alright, any other questions? Again, thank you for your time, gentlemen, your research and your work in this, and thank you parents for coming in and, and sharing your, your thoughts. We'll talk about it and make a decision probably later.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Not aware of any other public participation, so Sandra, we're ready for a four county Career Center Board.
I would like to announce that I attended on April twenty eighth, four counties National Technical Lawness Society banquet induction. And I would like to congratulate our Brian juniors that were inducted. Justin Doty, who's in the CAD program, Sidney Schultz in the pre-engineering program, and Elizabeth Yinger in law enforcement. So that's nice they were inducted. Also, school's pretty excited. On May eighteenth, this is the preschool graduation. It's always a fun time for the little ones. And then on May twenty third, the senior passport ceremony, four counties version of graduation. Our Brian student Katie Foster is one of the speakers. She's a state post-up officer. What's exciting about that for Katie, the students have to apply then audition to be able to be one of the speakers and only three students are picked. And there were well over a dozen, um, fifteen, eighteen students that applied. And, um, Katie was one of them, so a Brian student. Summer camp will be held June fifth through the eighth and it's free to those who attend, although it fills up fast, so it's first come, first served. There's flower power, dig this, and genius camp this year. And, um, we just set the, uh, summer school schedules for four county, which will be the week of June twelfth through the twenty ninth. And again, July tenth through the twenty third for those students that need it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Ross, we're ready for your report recommendations.
We'll start by looking at our financial reports. So for the month ended, April thirtieth, when at Farmers and Merchant State Bank, our balance was eleven million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, eighty dollars. Outstanding checks and adjustments totaled thirty-six thousand, thirty-four dollars. Investments at Star Ohio totaled three million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. At Morgan Stanley, nine million, eighty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And at State Bank, six million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, forty-five dollars. Petty cash and change funds totaled seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Total funds on hand, thirty million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. Of those balances, our general fund balance was fourteen million, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. Our bond retirement fund was one million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. Our permanent improvement fund, two million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. Our construction fund for L F I, locally funded initiatives, was nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine seventy-five. Our local share of the project funds for construction, seven million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, six dollars. And our construction funds from the state, three million, ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Once again, total funds on hand at the end of April, thirty million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. Our S M two report and reviewing our budget status, our revenues are about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars ahead of budget. And most of that is, um, our school district income tax, finished the year about a hundred and six thousand ahead of budget. Uh, rev, our expenses were currently about two hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, to the good there. So our variance at this point in time is about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars positive. Any questions on those reports? Amended appropriations. Appropriation totals at the end of April are thirty-eight million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Appropriation changes during the month, uh, general fund reduction of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven sixty-three. Food service, an increase of two thousand, one hundred and ninety. District managed activities, uh, increase of fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Permanent improvement fund increase of seventeen thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Bond fund, an increase of a hundred and ninety dollars. Indoor concessions, an increase of fifteen hundred. The tournament fund, an increase of ten thousand, four hundred and two dollars. And student activity funds increased twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. A general fund reduction, um, I found a pretty significant error that I had made when posting appropriations early in the year. I posted some labor to a couple of accounts that were inactive. And when I was working on the five-year forecast and going through things account by account, a couple of my reports weren't balancing out. And I sorted it a different way to bring in all the inactive accounts and I found that I had erroneously posted some significant appropriations to some inactive accounts. So that was a error that I made. And it makes our numbers for this year look significantly better. So I apologize for that error, but something that, uh, the report that I was checking on, when I posted my appropriations for labor, um, they were just all my active accounts and didn't include the inactive ones. So, anyway, any questions on appropriation changes? Okay, it's May, so we get to review the five-year forecast. We do this twice a year, May ends October. So our present, the tricky part of doing the fi- five-year forecast in May is twofold. One, in a year where we're doing the biennial budget, the biennial budget isn't complete yet. So we don't know what we're have to look forward to from state revenues moving for the next two years.
And the paper publishes various versions that have been proposed. And not yet finalized or acted on.
So far, we've had two versions of the budget bill. We've had the executive, we've had the executive version that came from Governor Kasich. And we've had a version that's been passed by the House. Those two versions vary significantly on, uh, educational revenues. Now, the Senate, they'll start working on the budget and they'll come up with their version. And, uh, when they're finished, there'll be a compromise committee formed of both the House and the Senate. And they'll sit down behind closed doors and hash out the final version of the budget bill.
And that's when we know what we're actually going to get. And that's probably closer to the end of July.
They have to have the budget bill pass by June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
It has to be signed by the governor by June thirtieth because the new year starts July one. So they'll try to finalize this thing, uh, probably in the Senate here in May. And then the compromise committee or the conference committee will meet in early June and get it hashed out. My five-year forecast, um, is going to, um, I've flatlined the school district revenues from the state. This year, we received seven million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And as we move through the forecast, I'm flatlining that until we know what the state budget is going to do. I feel comfortable that there's not going to be any reductions in the money they give us. There's, according to the House bill, there could be additional monies. So, um, as that comes through and we get that finalized, I'll revise those numbers and provide you an updated picture once the budget bill is, is, uh, is finished. So we look at our revenues for fiscal year seventeen, our general property tax for real estate, six million, five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's actual number. That's what we collected this fiscal year. Our unrestricted grants and aid, uh, three million, one hundred thousand dollars. That, excuse me, that's the school district income tax. I can't read. That's actual for the year. That's up about three point six percent from last year where we received two million, nine ninety-four. Unrestricted grants and aids, that's the, um, state foundation money that we just talked about, seven million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand. That's what the state's providing us this year. Property tax allocation, that line is our tangible personal property replacement money. That's our ten percent rollback, two and a half percent home site reduction and our homestead credit from real estate taxes. That totals about one million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand for this fiscal year. You can see that's slightly less than two million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand last year. Most of which is the reduction of T P P replacement money. All other revenue, we're about the same as last year, one million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
And tell me again, Rob, what factors go into all other revenues?
That's interest income, that's some tuition we receive from the state, it's open enrollment. Miscellaneous income that the school district may receive, any donations the school district may receive. Tuition from other sources, from other districts for special education purposes. Like I say, open enrollment is a big one that's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, the T P P replacement, and we're showing that on a downward trend because that's the scheduled phase out of that.
That's exactly right, Brian. Yeah, the, the law is in place for phasing that out to zero. The personal property replacement money that we used to receive for our permanent improvement fund has already been phased out. We're no longer receiving any of that. That was about a hundred and five thousand a year. Back in fiscal fifteen, we received about one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand in T P P replacement money.
So any money we would get in lieu, you talked about state foundation increases, would probably just go to offset what we lose in the T P P money. Give or take what the dollars shake out.
Give or take. It looks like we're losing around anywhere between two twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five thousand to two hundred thousand a year over the next five years on personal property replacement money. So our revenues, as we look from left to right, uh, this year, we're estimating our revenues to end up about twenty point six million. Next year, we estimate them to be about twenty point three. And as T P P replacement phases out, you can see that reduces slightly down to two thousand, twenty-one, nineteen million, six hundred thousand. So, um, basically, flatlining revenues, um, except for T P P replacement. Uh, on the expense side, uh, our total expenditures for this year are estimated at about twenty million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. It's based upon our, our budget appropriations for this year. Personal services and, um, employee retirement insurance benefits make up about eighty-five percent of our budget. As you can see, we're about twelve million, one hundred and eighty thousand on labor and four point eight million dollars on, uh, insurance and retirement benefits.
And I've asked you a lot, Rob, tell me again, what's in purchase serv- And now I've asked you a lot, Rob, tell me again what's in purchase services.
Purchase services includes-
Separate from the personnel, which is wages and benefits.
It includes any services that we purchase from outside such as um, utilities, any legal services, any services that we would purchase from Northwest Ohio Education Service Center for special education students. Include college credit plus tuition, um, things of that nature that uh, we would purchase from outs- any purchases from outside.
Okay, thank you.
The district. You see, supplies and materials are about four hundred and eighty-two thousand and other objects about two hundred forty-seven thousand. So um, the forty thousand operating transfer out, that's what we will estimate to transfer to our permanent improvement fund from the use of the rental of um, Fountain City Christian School over at the central building. So our expenses for this year totaled about twenty million seven hundred sixty-eight thousand at this point in time. So at this, right now, we're projecting a deficit spending of about a hundred sixty-five thousand. Uh, that's based upon the appropriations being completely spent uh, that are listed up above, which never happens. We will have some of that money coming back. So uh, this is, just gives you a picture based upon spending all of it, which won't happen. So I'd say, you know, by the June thirtieth, we'll probably finish the year in the black maybe from looking at this report, which is much better than I know I told you a few weeks ago. But we've had some additional revenues from Medicare um, that's been projected to come in before the end of the year. And then that large appropriation error that uh, that I found when I was combing through our accounts. So this year will end up uh, I think, a little bit better, much better than what I had originally forecast. Any questions on this year? And as we move into future years, most of our increases in appropriations, the labor and employee benefits are increases based upon uh, increases to employees' compensation from contracts that we have negotiated. Purchased services based upon uh, budget requests made by um, building principals and so forth, plus what we estimate to spend next year as we've worked our way through our budget cycle. Supplies and materials the same, other expenditures the same. So next year, uh, estimated expenses are about twenty million nine oh eight counting. Operating transfers out, that hundred and forty thousand of operating transfers out, that's forty thousand for the Fountain Cities cr- uh, transfer plus a hundred thousand dollar contingency that I leave in there for expenses as we work through the year in case something comes up in addition to what we've already budgeted. So next year's um, picture looks like deficit spending a possible five hundred seventy-eight thousand based upon the uh, revenues and expenses for next year. Then as we move out beyond that, the picture becomes, you know, increasingly difficult uh, with deficit spending. But it's, as Diana and I have said and talked about, it's just difficult to project where you're gonna be in years four and five. But uh, based upon, you know, possible labor contracts and our estimates with labor, labor budgets I've put together, and then adding one percent increases for purchase services, supplies and materials, other objects, that's kind of where the numbers fall into place with deficit spending of one point three million in fiscal year nineteen, two point one million in fiscal year twenty, and fiscal year twenty-one, possible two point nine million. So at the end of the forecast, uh, we're projecting the carryover balance of about four million eight hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. Where we stand today is about twelve million dollar carryover balance. So um, as labor increases, fringe benefits increase, and then some of our other line items there. You can see the trending as we work our way into the future. It's just the labor, the increases in labor expense just compound themselves as our labor budget becomes larger.
And we're in the people business, so uh, you know, over eighty percent of our budget is-
Eighty-five percent of our budget is personnel and-
Paying for our teachers, our staff, our custodians, our administrators, all of that. And those are negotiated contracts that um, we are contractually obligated to fulfill.
Yeah, so this, this is, this is the picture today. They say as we, as we get our budget, if we're, if we're one of the districts who receives some more money, I'll update this and plug that in and bring you up to date what the revenue picture looks like. The expenses, the expense projections won't change, but the revenue projections will, so.
Maybe the June, July meeting.
I'll just bring that up to date and, yeah, as we, the good time to do it is we'll have our final fiscal year seventeen numbers and then I can project what the additional revenues for the next four years are gonna be based upon the uh, based upon the capital budget from the state.
If you have any questions for Rob regarding the five-year forecast.
The good old five-year forecast. All right, let me get back to my papers here. Donations, we have, uh, we'd like to recognize a couple of donations. The VFW Post twenty-four eighty-nine donated a five-eight US flag to the middle high school. And Wesley United Methodist Church in partnership with Current Office Solutions, Spangler Candy Company, The Carlin Company, Beringer Herman and Eckhart, and Andreessen Neil and Low Agency have donated a sum of seven thousand eighty-seven dollars to the school district for school supplies for our students for the seventeen eighteen school year. This is just an outstanding donation, it's one that we really, really appreciate. And we just applaud these, these people for their total support of our district. This is big and we, we really appreciate those.
And those are direct consumables used by students, paper and pencils and crayons and markers and scissors and things like that.
You know, Mrs. Savage works directly with them on this.
Crayons, thanks to Jesus, thank you.
Next, we have uh, ask for your authorization to purchase a seventy-seven passenger bus from Rush Truck Centers. Our cost of that bus is eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That will take the place of one of the buses that will, you know, just as due to age, we're cycling through, moving one out of active sta- status and replacing it is a normal practice.
What's the age of the bus we're replacing, do you know? Just curious.
I couldn't tell you.
That's okay.
I don't have that from Joe.
I know that's Joe Beck's venue.
And Joe, they must have a uh, a wonderful supply of used buses right now because they were offering us very little on trade-in. So Mr. Beck is going to, he's gonna part out the other bus. And then what we'll do with what's left, we'll scrap it and we'll end up far in excess on revenues.
Is it wouldn't allow us much on a trade?
Eight hundred dollars.
Oh, wow, for a bus?
Yeah, so it wasn't worth it to, to trade it in.
Take it down there.
So Joe, Joe will scrap it out, get the parts that he can off of it. Move it forward.
Sorry, go ahead.
We'll ask for your authorization to transfer the half mil uh, of fiscal year two thousand seventeen property tax revenue from our permanent improvement fund to the OFCC project maintenance fund as required by the, that should read OFCC, not OPCC, OFCC project agreement. That's uh, moving the money into the O thirty-four fund. And then we can use that money in the O thirty-four fund for maintenance items on our buildings instead of using PI funds and general fund money. So that's another source of revenue that uh, we don't have to take money out of our PI or general fund to pay for operational um, expenses for repairs and service contracts and so forth. Ask for your authorization to repay the advance in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars back to the general fund from our food service fund. Original transfer was authorized in August of two thousand seventeen to provide us enough cash in that food service fund to pay our bills.
August sixteen?
August of sixteen, correct, thank you. We're not into seventeen.
Not yet.
We have one then and now certificate uh, to approve that's from Train U S Incorporated, four thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and sixteen cents. And I'll stop at that point for now.
If you have any questions of Mr. Rossworm on his treasurer's reports and recommendations. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve his report. Ryan, second please. Syndra, please call the roll.
That was Ryan that made the motion.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a locally funded initiative memorandum of understanding from OFCC for the pre-K to five construction project. That is in the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. That's for some of the uh, technology equipment and playground equipment for that building that we'll be paying, the district will be paying for until, if, until and if money is available from our construction fund, we'll pay that out of our permanent improvement fund. Fifty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars forty-seven cents.
Okay, motion to approve the LFI memorandum of understanding. Glenn, second please.
I'll second it.
Tom, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. And. Okay, I'll get these two and then I'll do that. Thank you for reminding me. Okay, final, or one more item here, uh, the approval of classified substitute Tori Savage and approval of supplemental contractor head girls tennis coach Chad Savage.
Syndra, second please.
Second.
Ryan, please call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And finally.
One more?
One more, off the addendum. Resolution to approve the GMP amendments to the construction manager agreement. This is GMP number six. Each time we um, move into a different phase of the project, they pass a GMP. This GMP is for the demolition of the Washington project. It is three hundred and, let me find it. Three hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars. This money has already been budgeted, it's in the project uh, budget already. It's just finally been bid and defined by Rudolph Libby. And it's about thirty-one thousand dollars less than what our original budget was, so.
Let's take it down, make it grass, right?
Correct.
All right, uh, motion please?
Sure.
Tom, second?
Second.
Glenn, please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
That's all folks, thank you.
Um, we have only, um, construction update, and I have a question because a question's been posed of me. What about the roof leaks at the new building? Consider that in there and I'll let you guys fight over who wants to talk about this, roof leaks at the new building. We're hearing about it, what's going on?
Well, we've had lots of rain in the past few days and it is a new building and there's gonna be some adjustments that need to be made. And the roofers and the window people were out last week to address the issues. Again, we're keep in mind that everything that was built has a warranty and a guarantee to be done correctly and if not done correctly, it will be fixed. And so that would be my comment, Tom, I don't know if you wanna add to that.
I've had the same questions and all I tell the folks is, I mean, I understand their concern and I'm not trying to minimize or trivialize their concern, but you know, with every new structure, you got a roof and if you have a roof, you're gonna have some leaks. You just have, you know, roof membrane terminating in walls, which is dissimilar material and unless the, you know, the, the termination is perfect and you get the wind blowing, the rain from another direction, all of a sudden you have a leak that you didn't know existed three rains ago. So it's, unfortunately, it's sort of like a shakedown period. You're just gonna have to endure until every possible combination has been experienced and you're sure you've got the, you know, the seal and the termination that you need to have on all the material against dissimilar materials. It's just one of those unfortunate realities.
But again, I would stress that it's not being ignored.
I appreciate that.
It's being addressed. Uh, the contractors are working to address the issues. We continue to work with Rudolph Libby and the subcontractors and we, we, we're not ignoring those problems. Because as Tom said, we take it very seriously and we wanna provide a, a good service and a good um, building for our kids to be in every day, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, what else is happening construction-wise, where are we on the?
Well, our Lincoln, Lincoln demo should be completed. Um, I drove by, they were leveling out some more dirt, removing some rocks and getting ready to plant. Our pre-K to five building, I've been going through, I was just through on Sunday. Uh, this, the academic wing, as we've reported, um, really is coming together. The finish painting, the whiteboards are going up, the cork boards are going up, the doors are being installed. And, and really, as we alluded to last month, it's just a matter of waiting on the carpet until the last, um, we get through the last bit. Even down to the kitchen and the kindergarten area, which is the least finished, you're starting to see finish paint go on, you're starting to see the ceiling dropped in, the exterior openings. Um, in the playground area, if you go drive or walk behind the school, you can see where some of the new roof has been installed, you can see where the playground foundation has been laid. The uh, casework is going in, the windows and EFS continue along the front side of the building if you've driven by, as well as cleanup of the brickwork. Um, as Rob mentioned just a few minutes ago, the Washington demo, the bids have been awarded and that work is scheduled to begin around July fifteenth. So we're really coming together with the pre-K to five building and uh, the demo of Washington will be the next step. And then they're working on the bid specs for the Portland campus.
Sounds like the schedule for the pre-K to five is not gonna be the challenge, I would say, that the six to twelve was.
I don't think it's gonna be the challenge, I think as Tom has alluded to many times, I still think we're gonna have that flurry of activity at the end. But I, as I say, from a year ago, when I walked through the six to twelve building, where that was at that point in time of May eighth to today, when I walked through the pre-K to five, it is night and day different.
Good, good. All right, then if there are no other questions regarding construction, Ms. Savage with your recommendations.
Okay, so first we'll start off with commendations for this month. Our students of action for flexibility for both the middle school, high school, as well as our character trait student commendations at our Portland campus, Washington Elementary Campus. And then our PE gold slip winners at our Portland campus, Skylar Hancock, and our um, Washington winners, Abby Fee and Adeline Gracia. So congratulations to all of those students who are great at being flexible. And sometimes in the spring, when it gets really crazy, that's needed. I would like to take a moment to thank and recognize our retirees for this year. Once again, um, just to commend these people for their years of service to Bryan City Schools and our students. So again, we recognize Christie Bellamy, who will be, had thirteen years of service, Cheryl K. Spear at twenty years, Dave Eckler at nineteen and a half years, Tom Hall at eight years, Cassandra Harder at twenty-nine years, Ken Coon at thirty-one years, Sandy Oberlin at twenty-nine years, and Rhonda Samples at sixteen years.
We will miss them all.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's commendations.
Moved.
Ryan? Syndra, please call the roll, Rob?
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Under administrative recommendations, first in your exhibit, we have a contract for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year with the Williams County Health Department to provide our school nursing services. This is a contract we started about three years ago. It's been a great service for us, it's a great partnership for us. Um, and it provides our school nurse with support um, in addition to the school itself. So again, I would recommend that contract. It's that time of year where we approve the pending graduation of the class of two thousand seventeen. Per the exhibit that you have in front of you, contingent upon their completion of their studies is required by both the Bryan City School District and the state of Ohio. And just as a reminder, for all that graduation this year will be held on Sunday, June eleventh at our new six to twelve inside our gymnasium, so.
We're gonna do inside?
We're gonna do inside, no matter what.
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning.
Ah, I forgot.
Yes. Uh, next we have the approval of the two thousand seventeen eighteen student handbook and addendums, as well as the preschool student handbook, so we're starting to prep for next school year. Uh, next you have-
Uh, next you have the approval, a request approval of the contract with Wilson Auction and Realty. This is for our upcoming auction at the Washington campus for furniture and fixtures and that will be held on June twenty-second, which is a Thursday at four P M, starting at four P M. And we hope to finish before midnight. So.
That fit their schedules? Is that why we're doing it Thursday night?
They really feel in the summer that that's gonna attract the best audience.
Everybody goes to the lake.
Yep. Uh, next we would recommend and ask for board approval of a change to lunch prices for the seventeen eighteen school year. We've seen a significant increase in cost, uh, as evident by our transfer of funds request that we just rectified this year. Adult, three dollars and thirty-five cents, six to twelve students, two dollars and eighty-five cents, K to five, two sixty, breakfast at a dollar fifty and milk at fifty cents. And I would still say that that's probably
Pretty good bargain.
Great price um for the types of food that we are able to serve. And then finally coordinators for fiscal year seventeen eighteen for prevailing wage, Title Nine, Section five oh four, asbestos, ADA, OSHA, civil rights, anti harassment, and our homeless liaison.
Okay, recommendations from the superintendent and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Tom, second please.
Second.
Glenn, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under personnel, I would like to recommend a two-year contract for Haley Brown, E M I S coordinator. Haley will be replacing our um Jane Whistler, who will be retiring in the fall, and Haley will not be coming in until the fall. Um, she's currently serving as an E M I S coordinator in a neighboring district and we look forward to having Haley with us next year.
She'll have some overlap time to work with Jane as a little bit on the job training.
A little bit, yep. One-year limited teaching contract for Jessica Root at grade five intervention, master's level, ten years experience from the, on the A one salary schedule. Jessica comes to us from the Columbus area and she's relocating here to be closer to family. Recommend Matt Dominic, seven, grade seven to twelve science teacher, master's level, fifteen years experience on the A one salary schedule. Uh, Matt also comes to us from a neighboring district. He is excited to get back into the classroom. Summer step ahead teachers. Um, again, we offer step ahead as a way for students to get some recovery credit towards graduation. Social studies, Amy Johnson, English, Brandon Odell, math, this is a correction. Diane Elsinger will be doing both the A M and P M session and science, Matt Cullen. High school summer school is an opportunity for students to get ahead on some of their credits required for graduation. So I would recommend PE teachers Lisa Frame and Kayla Bailey and Beatty in the morning and Matt Knapp and Jennifer Grant in the afternoon and then oral communications, Brandon Odell. Transfers of teachers for the seventeen eighteen school year, Kayla Beatty to kindergarten intervention and Brooke Inselman to cross categorical for grades K to one. Resignations, um, with much regret, Joelle Combs is going to hang up her driving hat. Uh, she will continue on as an aide for us in the district, but has decided to step away from the driving. And Jennifer Grimm, our pre K to five special ed education administrator, effective June thirtieth. Uh, Jennifer has been offered a position back in her original education district, so we wish her the best. Student summer workers for technology on an as-needed basis at minimum wage. Logan Cerny, Chris Spangler and Kurt Stokes. And on your addendum, under personnel recommendation, summer student workers for maintenance would be the clarification on an as-needed basis at minimum wage, Logan Deal, Delaney Zuber and A J Brenneman. Uh, non-renewal of supplemental contracts of our non-certificated staff. These are our spring supplementals and again, this is an annual action that we take. It is not a reflection of their duties or their performance. We'd like to ask uh, recognize athletic department volunteers for the fall season for seventeen eighteen for volleyball and then also for our music department for the seventeen eighteen school year. Supplemental contracts for seventeen eighteen are listed. We start with our academic supplemental contracts ranging from elementary quiz bowl all the way to class advisor. And then also in that list, you have our supplemental contracts for our fall coaching staffs. And where you see specified percentages is where our head coaches have opted to take a supplemental contract and share that amongst the staff that they are employing. It never goes above the contracted negotiated agreement. So I would entertain any questions regarding any of those personnel recommendations.
One quick question here. Back at the start of your list, uh, the one you're living the teaching contract, that applies to both Jessica as well as Matthew?
Yes, that is correct. Any other questions?
Any other questions regarding personnel? Ms. Matt, a motion to approve, please. Syndra, second?
Second.
Glenn, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And then under supplemental contracts, we have Chris, a recommendation for Christine Thormeyer for head cross-country coach.
So moved.
Glenn, second?
Second.
Uh, Ryan, please call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Upstein.
Ryan?
Yes.
And then although it seems like we just did our quarterly update, we do have another quarterly update from Neola. Um, this is in, again, in response to law changes and both at the federal and state level. This is just a first reading, but I would recommend that you take a look at those policies. If you have any questions, please let me know. We'll take a vote on those at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Points of information, as we talked about earlier, uh, I was in attendance at a uh kind of a seminar for the budget hearing this morning and listened to the speaker, who is highly regarded at the state level, say the exact same thing we talked about. The executive version was, was published and now the House version is published and soon the Senate version will be published and by the time it gets to conference committee, nobody's gonna recognize what's in it. So um, it's best that we sit tight. Uh, we all like some things that are in the current budget bill and we all don't like some things that are currently in the budget bill. So we're gonna kind of wait to see what shakes out officially um before making any drastic changes to our five-year forecast or to our operations. And again, keep in mind that sometimes those budget bills contain some unfunded mandates that tend to sneak in at the last minute, so we'll kind of keep an eye on that. Upcoming board meeting dates, we do have our next regular scheduled board meeting on June nineteenth at seven P M. We would like to, with the board's permission, announce that our board retreat will be that morning, starting at eight A M on June nineteenth here in the Fieldhouse Conference Room. Business advisory will meet June fifteenth at seven A M here in the Fieldhouse Conference Room as well. So is that date still work for everyone?
Okay. A good day for me.
Okay. Uh, so we'll now turn to reports from our.
Can I have just one minute under points of information?
You sure can.
I just wanna take a few minutes to thank the community for passage of our emergency operating levy and as I was you know, looking at the five-year forecast, we still need to be careful with our money and we're gonna continue to do that and mindful of our expenditures. But I was also looking under your recommendations, Diana, about the vast number of opportunities we provide our student, both academically, athletically, in co and extracurricular opportunities. And we're gonna be able to continue to do that thanks to the community's support. So I appreciate that very much. I wanna make sure we talked about that tonight.
Well, thank you very much, Emily, and I should've had that on my notes and I will add to that just a, a huge thank you to all that worked on the levy committee. It was a great committee and they, they put in a lot of time and effort into the marketing and answering questions and getting out and talking with people and so again, I would like to thank the committee as well for their hard work.
I agree. Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Demonstrators, I know you've been waiting.
I know. You're like jumping at the bit, ready to go, right? Mr. Roofer, you get to go first.
April athletics, first off.
Um, we're kinda hitting towards the stretch run here. Um, some things that don't necessarily involve Brian directly. We've got softball and the baseball districts coming up uh next week that will be hosting a park. Um, we'll try to host eight teams at once with parking, if you've been through the park, it's not great, but we're gonna figure that out.
At this moment.
Yeah, we're gonna figure that one out. Um, as far as Brian Athletics is concerned, uh, we're kinda towards the tail end here. Starting, I guess, with baseball, they, they won tonight. Uh, that puts them at twelve and nine. They beat Hicksville tonight. They'll play, we're going down to Van Works Wednesday night. They'll play Van Works, uh, the first round of sectional, uh, to see how far they go there. Tennis, uh, they, they played in their league, um, at Defiance College last Friday. Um, they actually tied for first and after tiebreakers were figured out, they ended up finishing third. Um, and then, yeah, I don't understand. All details of it, that switch shook out. Um, they play their um sectional uh this Thursday at D C as well. So finally, it looks like we got some good weather, so it looks like it'll be outside, but um for the last week, they're inside, so it's helpful over there. Big one coming up, softball. They're, uh, they had a win tonight. This is where I came from. Um, they're currently fifteen and five. Um, they've got a big one tomorrow with Liberty Center. That'll be uh for a chance of sharing league title, uh, which is uh very good for them. Um, they've had a pretty good season, um, both baseball and softball. And track's been a little bit this way too, but um actually, I was looking at it today. I was kinda surprised. Softball, up until tonight, hadn't played since April twenty-eighth with all the rain and stuff. Baseball, May first or something like that. So they've kinda gone on a stretch here where it's been. Weather's been wet, but they've been a little dry as far as games concerned. Um, and then they will host, softball will also host that on Friday. Um, the winner of Shawnee and Salina at home, which is kind of a big deal. Um, they're the better seeds. We'll host a sectional there as well. So they've got, they've got a pretty big weekend, uh, a pretty exciting time for that program, uh, along with baseball. Um, track, junior high, they'll run in their league meet on Saturday at P H. Um, that will wrap up their season. And then the high school, they have their league meet. Um, the prelims and field events are tomorrow at Evergreen, starting at two o'clock. And then the finals will be on Friday night, um, at seven o'clock at Evergreen as well. And then they will start district, start running a district following weekend and they'll get, get rolling there. I think we've got decent shot of some kids getting out and advancing in track. Um, they ended up with a pretty good season last year. We got a few of those kids back, a few additions. It's helped them as well. So kinda in a wrap-up mode, but busy mode as well, uh, with tournaments, all that stuff. So that's about all I had unless you had any questions for me.
Thanks and thanks for involving with the dual sports participation.
Yep. And I'd be more happy to answer any questions any other time about that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Which wouldn't take long.
Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
Good evening. Um, testing season's wrapping up, so we're moving our attention now to the C C I P and grant funding. Um, starting to roll out our plan for next year with our federal grants, including in that is our non-publics. We have to do a consultation meeting with those. I'm ongoing with those and meet with them on their federal participation and how it's gonna roll out from down. Uh, missing the news, USDA just rolled back some of our nutrition standards. Um, not a lot, but we were having to revamp all of our weekly menu rotations, um, to lower sodium content for next year. They repealed that, um, so we can stay at the same. Um, they also are offering for next year, it looks like, they had in the past, um, a whole grain waiver. Our kids are excited about that because they ask me all the time, we can bring back the regular noodles for spaghetti and mac and cheese. Um, so that's probably something to fall. They do. They're, they're
Yeah.
Kinda clumpy. I don't know a better way to put it. They're clumped together a little bit more than the regular noodles. Um, we haven't seen a big change there in the bread products with whole wheat. The kids don't really refuse them or complain about those, but for some reason, the spaghetti is, is kind of a hangup for them. Um, so we'll look at that waiver in the fall of applying for that and hopefully we can bring some regular noodles, as they put it. Um, also, we talked about the uh state budget. Um, thing I'm hearing in my world is the R E S S A, the Resident Educator Summit Assessment, maybe going by the wayside. Again, no one knows for sure. Um, I know we have some teachers that are begging for that. That's year three. Um, that's a huge time commitment for our teachers. In addition to the regular day, I say it's really they're back in college along with teaching for a day. Um, so we'll see what shakes out this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Well, first I wanna start off, we had our open houses last night for both Washington and Portland. Um, we had a good, good turnout. People came in with their cameras, taking pictures um of all of their memories that they had and some of them were looking through, we had a guest sign-in book, so some of them were looking through the sign-in book, looking to see if any of their classmates had been through as well. So that was, that was a lot of fun. So thank you to those who ha- um, came through last night for Portland and Washington. Um, like Chad had mentioned, we are finishing up science, fifth grade science testing tomorrow. That concludes testing for us at our level. On uh, May tenth, our fifth graders are going um visiting the six to twelve building, doing an orientation um on May tenth. And today, we had Mr. Will and Mr. Gordon bring over some high school and middle school students and did an intro to instruments. Um, so our fourth grade students can encourage or talk to their parents for an upcoming meeting that we have on May eleventh with parents, um, to get them also on board with our fifth graders playing um instruments, our fourth graders to be interested in playing an instrument for next year. On Saturday, May thirteenth, this Saturday at ten o'clock starts our color run. We have a variety of races. Um, our first one uh starts at ten for our preschool students and then our last race starts at eleven fifteen for our fourth and fifth grade students. So please join us. Wear white. We'll fill it with color. On May nineteenth, we have our Portland Character Trait Assembly and then on May twenty-fifth, we have it's called Pizza Parents and P B I Fs. We're gonna be starting P B I S next year. And it's a way to get our community involved with what, what we're doing and how parents can use and implement P B I S also at home. So we've had donations from Bill's Locker Room and from Spangler Candy, from Saunders. Um, we have a couple of Brian Pool passes, um, to entice our, our community to come and possibly win some of those items.
So it's really Karen, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's, it's a way for parents to understand the disciplinary system that's gonna be implemented at the school and be able to actually take some of that home.
Absolutely.
And so they have, the students will have consistency both at home and school.
Yeah, I'm putting together a handbook of, it has around roughly five pages, but it also has our P B I S referral form, which is, you can call it a discipline form. Um, but it has staff manage and administrative managed, um, and we're gonna go through that form with parents.
But and these are methods and, and approaches that have been tested and determined to be effective
Yeah.
in managing student behavior?
Yes. Um, it stands for the P B I S is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports and it's school-wide. What we did this year at um Portland is we have, we have another database that we're keeping track of every P B I S form that has come in. We call it a P B I S form, even though we actually haven't implemented full P B I S because we um, our committee of uh twelve people, we've, we've been putting it together all year.
So it's like a discipline sheet. For example, if a teacher has an incident, they fill out the form, send it to the office.
Correct. But what, what this program does is, you know, we teach reading, we teach social studies, we teach science, we expect behavior. So this program is all about teaching the correct behavior. So our committee has set up a matrix of what does, uh, and we have three expectations, being responsible, be respectful and be safe. And how do, how, how can we be responsible in the cafeteria? How can we be safe in the cafeteria? How can we be respectful in the cafeteria? And then we have a lesson plan for that. And then we have hallway, gym, recess, classrooms. We have all of those. Uh, but we don't call them rules. We have, we call them expectations. Um, so then at that meeting, parents will learn about our expectations and ways they can, they can use those at home and just using common language. That's also something that we wanna try to get out there is just using common language.
Education speak. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Rary?
Hi, good evening. We too have finished up our, our testing, so we're full throttle forward here till we hit graduation on Sunday, June eleventh. So already noted, we have the fifth graders coming over. We're excited to show them what our, our building has to hold for them and get them interviews to our staff and students uh this coming Wednesday and it's the big prom week this week. So this Saturday, the theme is Alice in Wonderland, so we wish our students a fun and safe prom on uh Saturday night and hopefully have a blast and make some great memories. With all of the end of the year dates coming up, we have our awards night set. So our senior scholarship night is Monday, May fifteenth and we know that we're gonna recognize um our students for all their successes as they get ready to graduate. And then our academic booster club awards night is set for Tuesday, the twenty-third. Both of those are at seven P M. And then our academic booster club award tonight is set for Tuesday, the twenty-third, both of those are at seven P M. We have a kind of a unique, um, way to bring the community in this coming, or, or next Wednesday, the seventeenth. Our English department has been working all year on something that they call, everybody has a story. And they've had English students, grade six through twelve, interview a variety of people in the community from a variety of backgrounds to start to learn people's stories. How do they get where they are today? And the kids have really bought into this and really learned a lot about different professions and different personalities and different interests. And they are wanting to showcase what they've learned to the community. So from eleven to one on the seventeenth, they're calling it a humanities expo. They're gonna take some of the, the top, um, pieces of work, uh, that, projects that were created. They're gonna have those on display in the athletic and gym lobby area. And they're gonna have our chorus, our choir's gonna be singing that day, there's gonna be hors d'oeuvres provided by Mrs. Viddick's Foods Courses. It's just a great opportunity for people to come in and see some of the academics the students have been working on all year, so it's the seventeenth of May. And then we have our eighth grade Chicago trip, right on the horizon, the eighteenth and nineteenth, so we're excited for that, for our eighth graders to see. Uh, certain areas of Chicago, A, experience the big city, and then go to the Museum of Science and Industry. Uh, medieval, medieval times theater, I gotta slow myself down here, and Navy Pier. So the kids are really getting excited for that as well, uh, in a trip, um, some of them have, some of them have never experienced before, so we're really looking forward to that. And then we finish out our year with exams, the final days of school, and then of course, graduation, so. Thank you.
Can we run it from now till June?
Yes.
Um, I am aware of a need for executive session for three areas. The first is for personnel, um, the second is for negotiations, and the third is for purchase of real estate. So that's under items A, B and D. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive sessions for those stated reasons.
So moved.
Tom, second please?
I'll second.
Syndra, please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Thank you.
No action to be taken, thank you for coming.